Good afternoon, everyone. It is three o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. And on behalf of the trustees, I extend a heartfelt welcome to all of you who have joined us for our March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four public board meeting. And we'd like to extend a warm welcome to our special guests from the ATA. With us, we have Ron Zaharko, our local president, Lisa Reeves, executive staff officer, and Lori Arczy, executive liaison teacher welfare. Thank you very much for joining us here today. As well, we want to take an opportunity and just thank you right at the onset for your diligence in representing our teachers with integrity and professionalism. Thank you so much. And on the note of amazing representation, it gives us great, it gives us great joy to welcome and call upon Father Julian to please lead us in prayer.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Palazzo, Chief Superintendent Anderson, trustees, brothers and sisters in Christ. Let us begin as we always do in a Christian Catholic tradition with God's great sign of love for all of us. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
A reading from the Holy Gospel according to John.
Lord, hear your word.
Jesus said to the Jews who had believed in him, "If you continue in my word, you are truly my disciples, and you will know the truth, and the truth will make you free." They answered him, "We are descendants of Abraham and have never been slaves to anyone. What do you mean by saying you will be made free?" Jesus answered them, "Very truly I tell you, everyone who commits sin is a slave to sin. The slave does not have a permanent place in the household. The son has a place there forever. So if the son makes you free, you will be free indeed. I know that you are descendants of Abraham, yet you look for an opportunity to kill me because there is no place in you for my word. I declare what I have seen in the Father's presence. As for you, you should do what you have heard from the Father." They answered him, "Abraham is our father." Jesus said to them, "If you were Abraham's children, you would be doing what Abraham did. But now you're trying to kill me, a man who has told you the truth that I heard from God. This is not what Abraham did. You are indeed doing what your father does." They said to him, "We are not illegitimate children. We have one Father, God himself." Jesus said to them, "If God were your Father, you would love me, for I came from God, and now I am here. I did not come on my own, but he sent me." The Gospel of the Lord.
Lord, hear your word, Jesus Christ.
As we see in the Gospel of John, this is going to lead us exactly to where we're actually heading this coming Sunday, which is Palm Sunday. And with that, we will begin the holiest of all weeks, as we ourselves journey with Jesus, who knows what's awaiting for him? The cross. Yes, the passion, and then the cross. Jesus reminds us, as he reminded the people of Israel, that if you, if God were your Father, you would love me, he says to them, because the word that I share with you is from the Father. So, we are called to journey with Jesus, starting with this Palm Sunday, as we bring palm branches home or palm leaves home, so that we may be reminded of the passion of Christ each and every day. But then especially on that holy Thursday where Jesus will actually step down and wash the feet of his disciples and show them that they are to serve one another. And so are we. We're called to serve one another. And with that in mind, he will lay his life on Good Friday. And I call upon each and every one of us to find that time, especially during this week. It's going to be a spring break for us. I know a lot of us will be still working, but Good Friday, I call upon everybody to come and spend some time in the church. And especially, my prayer throughout this Lenten season has been the prayer of Saint Ephraim the Syrian. And every day that I pray it, I remind of myself what God is calling me. And I offer this prayer at the foot of the cross. Let me share it with you. "O Lord and Master of my life, dry for me the spirit of indifference, despair, lust of power, and idle chatter. Instead, bestow on me your servant the spirit of integrity, humility, patience, and love. Yes, O Lord and King, let me see my own sins and not judge my brothers and sisters, for you are blessed forever and ever." The response to our petitions is, "Lord, hear our prayer."
Lord, hear our prayer.
For Catholic education, that our Catholic schools may reveal the glory of God in all that they do, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That our Catholic schools may fill students with a love for learning and a desire to change the world for the better, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That all our teachers, staff, administrators, and trustees in Edmonton Catholic schools may be strengthened for their important task in our world and be blessed this Easter season. With God's abundant mercy, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
Grant, we pray, Almighty God, that receiving the grace by which you bring us to new life, we may always glory in your gift through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
And may the blessing of the Lord be upon you with his grace and love for all of us. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you so much, Father Julian, for sharing such a beautiful message, and of course, for your guidance and faith leadership to Edmonton Catholic schools. You are and continue to be an inspiration to us all. Thank you very much. Moving on to 1.2 on the agenda, we'll call upon Vice Chair Turchansky to please read our land acknowledgement. And I will now put you in queue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of Treaty Six and the home of Métis Nation of Alberta, Region Four. We also acknowledge the Inuit and other diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors have marked this territory for centuries, a place that has welcomed many peoples from around the world to make their home here. We at Edmonton Catholic Schools commit to restoring and honoring the truth and reconciliation calls to action. We strongly believe that truth must be acknowledged to move forward to reconciliation. Together, we call upon all of our collective communities to build a stronger understanding of all the peoples who dwell on this land we call
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Turchansky. Next on the agenda is 1.3, roll call. And we'll note for the record that all trustees are present. Moving on to 1.4, approval of the agenda, and we'll require a motion to approve today's agenda as circulated. And I do see trustee Tibere in queue. Go ahead, please, trustee Tibere.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do not.
Thank you. And so seeing no one else in queue, I'll now call the vote. Thank you very much. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion to approve today's agenda as circulated has been approved. We'll now move on to approval of the minutes, 1.5.1. And once again, we'll require a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And I do recognize trustee Mutella in queue. Give me one moment here, trustee Mutella. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no one else in queue, I'll proceed once again to call Thank you. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record, the motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four is carried. Thank you, everyone. And as there are no matters arising from the minutes, we'll move on to number two on the agenda, business of the meeting, 2.1, Alberta Teachers Association Collective Agreement, two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four. And I'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Madam Chair.
And trustee Ingle, you are in to speak. One moment, please. Go ahead, please.
Before you introduce this topic, I would like to step out because I believe I have a conflict of interest. I have a daughter that teaches with the district.
Thank you very much, trustee Ingle, for your diligence. Granted, thank you. And trustee Tibere, I see you in queue as well. One moment, please. Go ahead, please, trustee Tibere.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would like to declare a conflict of interest.
Thank you very much for your diligence and granted. So for the record, please note that we have four trustees who are here for this discussion and two have left the room. Thank you. Go ahead, Chief Superintendent Anderson, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and trustees. Today, we have Superintendent Kennard and her team, who will be sharing details about Alberta Teachers Association Collective Agreement, two thousand and twenty to twenty-four. Over to you.
Thank you. Before I share the memo, I would just like to thank and acknowledge my colleagues from the Alberta Teachers Association and from Human Resource Services who are representing with me here today. Our collective agreement with the Alberta Teachers Association, ATA, expired on August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. A notice to bargain from the Edmonton Catholic Teachers Local Fifty-four was received by the division on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Negotiations between the bargaining committees spanned approximately one year, beginning on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Although a memorandum of agreement was reached in June, two thousand and twenty-three, it was not supported. Collective bargaining resumed and concluded on February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four with mediator support. When a second MOA was reached, on June, sorry, on Tuesday, March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Edmonton Catholic Teachers Local Fifty-four voted in favor of the second MOA. Through mediation, the parties continued with an interest-based approach focused on gaining clarification of proposals, processes, and practices. Topics of discussion and agreement centered on recognizing the contributions that teachers make to our schools and school communities, professional development, commitment to service, and work-life balance. I now invite Chief Superintendent Anderson to read the recommendation.
Thank you, Superintendent Kennard. And so the recommendation is that Edmonton Catholic School Division Board of Trustees accepts and ratifies the final memorandum of agreement between the Edmonton Catholic Teachers Local Fifty-four and the Edmonton Catholic School Division. Over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Kennard, our ATA representatives, and of course, our entire bargaining committee, who are not all with us today, for recognizing the outstanding contributions of our teachers and the excellent service that they provide to our schools, our division, and of course, our students. We wish to applaud the collective efforts of the entire bargaining committee. It speaks volumes to the faith and integrity in your commitment to reaching a negotiated resolution. On behalf of the board, I share our gratitude to everyone involved for affirming the best interests of those who join together in this great endeavor of Catholic education. And as this recommendation requires a motion, I will turn it to Vice Chair Turchansky, who's in queue, to please make this motion. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move that the Edmonton Catholic School Division Board of Trustees accepts and ratifies the final memorandum of agreement between the Edmonton Catholic Teachers Local Fifty-four and the Edmonton Catholic School Division.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Turchansky. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do. Thank you very much. So I love that it's interest-based. Quite frankly, this is one of my favorite things to do. It's ridiculous. I, I love it. I find it so collaborative. The approach is nothing that I've ever expected it ever to be. And I've been on it for a bit. And every time I step through that room, I love the fact that we have our staff and our teachers at the forefront. It's never a fight. It's never an argument. We actually sit down. And despite how much work may be created by new things that come up, people are willing to do the work on both sides and really find the sweet spot in the middle of it. And I can tell you, I'm not the guy doing the work in there, for sure. But when I see how much effort is involved by each and every single person in there with our teachers at the forefront, it truly warms my heart. And I'm so delighted we came to where we were because, quite frankly, it does show the, the value that we feel and the respect and the gratitude that we have for, for our teachers and the fact that your group really stood up for, for your staff. So I think that is absolutely remarkable. And I love where we came to. And grateful for, for you and the group that you led and the guidance that you offered me. So, and to our board, quite frankly, you know, we had to come back. And I love that we have the opportunity to come back to them too and talk about things. So I'm really, really grateful for all that they did and you did and you guys do for, for your teachers and your staff. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Turchansky, and foremost for affirming the collaborative efforts that went on in the room. We wish to thank you as well and your great efforts and diligence as a valuable member of the collective bargaining team. And I'll now open the mic to the rest of the board for questions and or comments. And I do see trustee Harris in queue. Go ahead, please, trustee Harris.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Vice Chair Turchansky, for your involvement in this. As well, thank you, Ron, Lisa, and Lori, for, for your incredible participation throughout this process. As Vice Chair Turchansky has mentioned, the, and the board did have an opportunity to review the detailed terms of, of the agreement in our preceding governance meeting. So those trustees who are at the table right now have had an opportunity to have a full and thorough briefing as to where things are at. And I, for one, I'm comfortable with, with, with where things have landed. I want to thank you so much for your, for your diligent and your, your, your inspiring leadership of, of the, of this process. Well done. And thank you very much, trustee Turchansky, and of course, the entire team from Human Resources as well, who were all involved in that. So I'm assuming that when we're, when we're voting today, this is on what we have, what was presented to us in governance.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Turchansky, pardon me, trustee Harris. And so I'm looking at the queue and seeing no other trustees in queue. I'll once again echo the gratitude of our board and add that we are, did you want to speak? Oh, sorry, my, my, you were smiling. I thought this was just, you know, inner smiles. Thank you. Yeah, she was smiling at her. Thank you. We just want to express the gratitude of our board and add that we are extremely, extremely fortunate as our teachers are deeply committed to the students and families of Edmonton Catholic Schools and dedicated to helping our students reach their full potential. So thank you. And I'll turn it back to you, Vice Chair Turchansky. Should you wish to close your motion before calling the vote? No. All right, then. So we will now call the vote. Thank you very much. And as the four trustees at the table have voted and are in favor, I'll note for the record that the motion is carried. Thank you. And kudos to all for affirming the commitment of our teachers and focusing on the best interests of all. We're grateful to be able to move forward together, providing the best experiences for our students. Thank you and kudos to all. And so on that note...
We have an agreement.
We have an agreement. Yes!
Yes!
Well done.
Were we going to do a photo?
I believe we're going to do a photo.
Right. And we all, every opportunity to have a photo op, right? Superintendent Kennard, where would you like us? Here?
Do you want me in the middle, probably, hey?
Sure.
We're here?
Yeah.
Come on down, come on down.
Yeah.
Sure, let's, we're in the center of us, yeah.
Does that computer get in the way?
It needs a little bit more room here.
I'm sure it's the middle point.
Right here.
Right here.
Well, the...
Perfect.
Because we can go to the toilet.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a middle point.
Okay.
And then I'll go to the toilet.
Yeah.
Well, you are there.
Stay on the picture.
Spoiler.
Are we good?
Yeah.
For our children.
Yes, everything is good.
For our children.
Jimin, Jimin.
Sorry.
We're real happy.
There it is now. All right. So, there. It's the time. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Yeah.
I'm not telling you, Debbie, if you weren't here for the road, then you don't know what it is.
I can't know anything.
We are smiling. We're joyful.
Well, we're taking photos and we're shaking hands. So we'll leave it to trustee...
There's not even a baby to get us.
Well, we'll leave it to trustee Tibere and trustee Ingle to figure out what the resolution was on that.
We're all happy. We're happy.
And on that note, we wish, of course, our ATA a glorious Easter and a well-deserved, relaxing, and enjoyable spring break. And I am going to say that we will offer you the gift of time, giving you the opportunity for a fast getaway, so you can slip out, or you can enjoy the rest of the meeting with us. But you know, you're welcome to stay, but you may be in for a very long meeting and afternoon. But I will turn it over to Chief Superintendent Anderson for any closing remarks before letting you decide what you'd like to do. Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you slip away, I just wanted to take an opportunity also to acknowledge the valuable contributions that teachers make in our schools. And we're happy that you're here to join us today and celebrate the fact that we do have our agreement. Here's your chance to get away. And so I offer you the time, gift of time, if you do want to leave. We thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And we'll, you know, this will be like the Academy Awards. We'll give you a round of applause as you're leaving. How's that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, that was a great start to today's meeting. And next on the agenda, under business of the meeting, is 2.2, three-year capital plan, two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-eight. And I'll turn it back over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, in compliance with provincial directives, Edmonton Catholic Schools annually evaluates its school capital requirements and presents a prioritized list of projects based on factors such as enrollment pressures, health, safety, declining demographics, and modernization needs. These priorities are outlined in a three-year capital plan on an annual basis and subsequently forwarded to Alberta, Alberta Education for funding consideration. Today, we have Superintendent Fiaco and his team to present the division's capital plan for two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-eight. Over to you, John.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Madam Chair, and the board trustees. I also would like to acknowledge my team here today. They put together a wonderful plan for the next three-year capital plan, and I appreciate everything they do for, for the division. I'm blessed to work with them. On behalf of the UCSD family, I stand before you with a heart full of gratitude and admiration for the exceptional work and unwavering advocacy of our Board of Trustees and Chief Superintendent. Thanks to your exceptional leadership and relentless advocacy, on behalf of our students, staff, and local communities, we can now look forward to a future where our students will have an increased access to a high-quality Catholic education in well-equipped facilities, as three thousand six hundred new learning spaces across four new K-9 school facilities will be added to the Division Directory of Schools over the next three to four years. Division will also undertake design work for two more K-9 schools. They will add an additional one thousand eight hundred student learning spaces. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed, and we are grateful for everything you do. While the March first capital announcements made by the province were welcome news, I bring your, to your attention the pressing need for further advocacy of thirteen more school construction projects within the Edmonton Catholic School Division. The two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-eight capital plan aims to tackle significant enrollment pressures, as failing to meet these demands could lead to larger class sizes, longer transportation times, less access to Catholic education, and utilization rates exceeding one hundred and fifty percent in some schools. Over the past few years, enrollment has surged by over ten percent, pushing our division's overall utilization rate to ninety-eight percent, six years ahead of projection. Despite this growth, approved capital projects have only provided new spaces for four thousand eight hundred students, covering a mere forty percent of the total increase of twelve thousand students over the past decade. To alleviate enrollment pressures, UCSD is resorting to temporary measures to redirect students from severely overcrowded schools. The situation is not sustainable, and it's already impacting families within our community. Shockingly, forty percent of our schools, including nine of our ten high schools, are over capacity. These numbers are expected to rise even further next year. Despite opening two new high schools by September of two thousand and twenty-six, UCSD is still facing a shortage of one thousand four hundred spaces for high school students. In five years, this shortage is expected to grow to two thousand five hundred spaces, particularly in West and South Edmonton. It is imperative that all year-one priorities outlined in the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-eight capital plan are approved and built as soon as possible to ensure equitable access to Catholic education throughout the city of Edmonton. As we look at our capital plan asks for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-eight, we notice the urgent need for the continuation of two design projects announced on March first and the, and the focus on high school learning spaces in our division. We will also notice that our school-sized capacity asks have increased as our city is experiencing rapid growth. And it is paramount that we take proactive measures to ensure that all students have access to high-quality... of 1,400 spaces for high school students. In five years, this shortage is expected to grow to 2,500 spaces, particularly in West and South Edmonton. It is imperative that all year-one priorities outlined in the 2025 to 2028 capital plan are approved and built as soon as possible to ensure equitable access to Catholic education throughout the city of Edmonton. As we look at our capital plan asks for 2025, 2028, we notice the urgent need for the continuation of two design projects announced on March 1st and the focus on high school learning spaces in our division. We will also notice that our school-sized capacity asks have increased as our city is experiencing rapid growth. And it is paramount that we take proactive measures to ensure that all students have access to high-quality Catholic education. Let's have a closer look at our year-one asks. In Ward 74, in the area of Riversview, Rivers Edge, priority number one. Our first priority is the construction of a new kindergarten and grade-nine school in Rivers Edge with a school opening capacity of 950 and 1,200 seats with full build-out. The West Endy planning sector is currently operating at 130% utilization and is projected to reach 144% in 10 years. This sector faces a significant shortfall of over 3,000 spaces, forcing many students to travel long distances to attend schools in other areas. The new school in Rivers Edge will not only address this capacity issue, but will also provide a sense of community for students in the area. The division has been awarded funds to design this school, but we still need to advocate for full construction funding to be announced in the next round of capital announcements. In Ward 77, the area of Meadows, West Laurel, priority number two. In Laurel, we are seeking to construct a new K-9 school with a capacity of 950 students to alleviate overcrowding in the eldersly planning sector. With a projected utilization of 156% in 10 years, there's an urgent need for additional capacity. This school will serve both the eldersly and Millwoods and Meadows planning sectors, providing much-needed relief to overcrowded schools in the area. It will also accommodate the growing Astor neighborhood, which is expected to include nearly 3,500 housing units at full build-out. As is the case with number-one priority, we have been awarded funds to design this school, but we still need to advocate for full construction funding to be announced in the next round of capital announcements. Ward 74, Lewis Farms, Rosenthal, priority number three. The construction of a new grade 10 to 12 school with an opening capacity of 1,810 students in Lewis Farms is vital to meet the needs of the West High School planning sector. With a projected utilization of 163% in 10 years, there's a clear need for additional high school's capacity. The new school will be the first high school in the city's West Endy district and will provide students with access to a wide range of programming options to prepare them for future success. Equity of access to Catholic education for high school will be a significant challenge in West Edmonton until a new high school is approved and built. In Ward 77, priority number four, the Meadows, Silverberry. In the Meadows, we aim to build a new grade 10 to 12 high school with a capacity of 1,810 students to address overcrowding in the Southeast High School planning sector. With a projected utilization of 151% in 10 years, there's an urgent need for an additional high school there as well. The new school will provide much-needed relief to Holy Trinity Catholic High School, which is already operating at 106% capacity and is expected to increase to 123% in three years. It also—will also offer additional programming options to attract students from other sectors, helping to relieve pressure on existing schools. If a high school in the Meadows is not approved, the Southeast High School sector will become significantly overutilized, over 138% in five years. Ward 73, St. Alphonsus Replacement School, priority number five. The replacement of an existing St. Alphonsus Catholic Elementary Junior High School with a new K-9 school is essential to provide operational efficiencies and a modern learning environment for students in the 118th Ave planning sector. The current school, operating at only 56% capacity, needs modernization. This replacement school will have an opening capacity of 680 students with the option to increase capacity to 905 at full build-out. This plan will not only right-size the facility for more efficient operation and utilization, but will also revitalize the community and pave the way for positive generational impact for the families it serves. In rounding out year one, in Ward 71, consolidation project in Northwest Edmonton. The consolidation of schools and the construction of a new K-9 school with a capacity of 950 students at the Palisades Oxford School Site will provide operational efficiencies by bringing together student populations from older and smaller schools. This project will also improve access to junior high programming in the Northwest planning sector, which is currently lacking in this part of the city. The consolidation will streamline operations, leading to cost savings in administration, transportation, maintenance, custodial, utilities, and insurance costs. In conclusion, the construction of these new schools and the expansion of existing ones in our capital plan are critical to ensuring that students in our communities have access to high-quality education in new, well-equipped facilities. We urge you to support and advocate for these projects and the ones identified in years two and three to help us provide an excellent Catholic education to our current and future students. I want to quickly look at the map here for the year-two and three projects. And if you notice on the map, the red icons are the year-one projects. Brown is year-two, and the purple is year-three. So, for year-two, in Ward 76, our number-seven ask is a new school in Windermere Number Five area, capacity of 950. And you'll see that in the southwest sector just below Joan Carr. In Ward 77, priority number eight, a new K-9 school in Dakota Meltwater, the Southeast side of Edmonton, capacity 950, opening 1,200 at full build-out. In Ward 71, a new school in Big Lake, Northwest Edmonton, capacity 950, 1,200 full build-out. Ward 73, priority number 10, replacement modernization of St. Francis of Assisi Catholic Elementary School, capacity 650. Onto year-three. Ward 76, priority number 11, a new high school in Glenraining Heights, capacity 2,410. Ward 73, priority number 12, new K-9 school in Kirkness or Horse Hills, capacity 950, 1,200 full build-out. And rounding out the capital plan in Ward 77, priority number 13, new K-9 school in Dakota Matson, capacity 950, full build-out, 1,200. The 2025-2028 capital plan includes 13 capital projects at a net estimated cost of $712 million. I'll now pass it back to Chief Superintendent Anderson to read the recommendation.
Thank you, Superintendent Fiaco. And so, this is the first recommendation, which is that the Board of Trustees approves the division's three-year capital plan 2025 to 2028.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Fiaco, and the entire team. It is our turn to share similar accolades for your vision, to all of you, for strategically addressing our enrollment pressures. And, you know, as we were thinking back, as we were all reading our packages, and we went through this in governance, it's been quite the journey witnessing the foresight of educational planning and with the inception of our walking together towards a glorious future initiative that, when it was first brought forward, there were a lot of questions. But looking back and seeing where it's taken us today, boy, oh, boy, did it make—does it ever make sense? So, 2025 to 2028 continues to strategically aim to address our enrollment pressures with the utilization rate of 98% while enhancing the operating efficiencies. Like, that's nothing to scoff at. That said, we wish to applaud the efforts of our chief superintendent, our senior administration, and all our departments, particularly Superintendent Fiaco and our educational planning team, as it is through your strategic—and I'm going to use the word acumen—that we were awarded with full construction funding for four schools and design funding for two. The division's capital plan continues to address our division's enrollment pressures, particularly in the area of our high school spaces, which are, as we heard Superintendent Fiaco, operating at overcapacity. And with the unprecedented continued enrollment growth that we are experiencing, a good thing to be experiencing, the only solution to our space crisis is, of course, new schools, as this will help alleviate the overcrowding and the pressures of having to implement those temporary measures that are very disruptive and extremely challenging for our families, as every student should have the possibility, the opportunity, to receive an excellent Catholic education in the community in which they reside. And as this is a recommendation and it requires a motion, I will turn it to trustee Mutala, who's in queue, to please go ahead and make this motion on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the division's three-year capital plan 2025 to 2028.
Thank you very much, trustee Mutala. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do, but you've said just about everything I was going to say.
I'm sorry. It's one of—I know—it's one of those passionate topics for me, but my apologies. Just say it all over again. We want to hear it over and over again. It's part of your advocacy.
I know it's—I know it's part of my advocacy. I truly believe what Chair Palazzo said, because we have had that—our plan in place, walking together for a glorious future for quite a few years already. And because of our great three-year plans that you and your teams have put together for us, that's why we were able to get what we got from the government when it was announced, I think, on March 1st or whatever day it was. Anyway, it is just awesome that we were able to—if we can do this over the—our three-year capital plan with new construction, replacement, and modernization to help alleviate our high enrollment pressures in our different planning sectors and in schools, which we are all overutilized. And I know even just this call from last week, a parent wanted to put a child into a school, but there's no room at some of our schools, so we have to find ways to alleviate the situation. So, thank you for all your hard work, and I truly believe that we have such good capital plans that they look at this. We're well-respected with the government.
Thank you very much, trustee Mutala. And I'll now—I'll now turn it to the board for any questions and/or comments. And I do see trustee Ingle in queue. Go ahead, please, trustee Ingle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first, too, Superintendent Fiaco, thank you for recognizing our lobby. But I'll tell you, as somebody who's been lobbying a very long time, the way you present things really helps. I mean, we can chunk information to people who aren't sitting at this table and who this isn't their everyday life from the materials you provide us. So, you make it really easy for us to educate by the education that we receive and the way that you've started to, you know, map it out. For example, if we're putting articles in the—in some of the community newsletters, I'm looking at this, and I'm not freaking out, because I've got my newsletter in the—what you've given me, which is advocacy. Do you know what I mean? Because the people read it, and it's so well-explained. So, I think that a great deal of our success as advocates comes back to the work that you and your team do, John—or Superintendent Fiaco, and, of course, Chief Superintendent Anderson. I just have one thing. Why are some of the K-9s, like 42 and 44 million—it's 44 million, it looks like, is a full build-out, and then 42 million, it doesn't say full build-out? With—is there a reason for that? Like, when I look at the capital plan, it'll say, "This school, 44 million, full build-out, 1,250 kids," and it'll say, "950 kids," but it won't have full build-out, and it'll say 42 million.
Madam Chair, through trustee Ingle, I'll take a stab at this one. I would defer to probably Superintendent Waslenk or even Joseph to answer this question, but generally, it's based on a schedule in terms of this population size and the cost that goes with that school. And it's just an estimate at this time. The actual costing doesn't happen until after the design.
No, and I get that, but is there—the reason—so, the reason for the full build-out is, right now, we don't anticipate needing a full build-out. Okay. And I'm—I'm just really touchy with that subject, because when we built St. Oscar Amaro way back in 1999 while planning, and then 2000, we built it in a way that there could not be a full build-out. And from somebody who's taking calls from overpopulated schools, sure would be nice if we could—could have had a full build-out. So, yeah. So, they can have a full build-out. It just doesn't look anticipated that we'll—it doesn't look like we'll need it.
Madam Chair, trustee Ingle, I can guarantee you that when—future designs will incorporate that into—the design of the original building.
Thank you so much. And then, the other question I have is, with the West End, we do have the property where we did at one time get 2 million for design to build a fourth-year completion, which way the Education Act went, just the way the education landscape went. We don't need it. We still have that land that is in proximity to the sports center, right?
Madam Chair, through trustee Ingle, we are currently speaking with the city on that land right now for the West End High School.
Okay, good, because I'm going to put that in my article. Thank you so much. I can't thank you enough. I look out and I see your team, and enjoy every one of you when you present, and we're glad that you're keeping our great Superintendent Fiaco with, you know, no hair.
All right. And that said, we will now call upon trustee Taber, who's next in queue. Go ahead, please, trustee Taber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I do want to start by thanking the government for the recent announcements for our new schools. It's definitely something that we need, and as we can see today, we need more. So, it's wonderful for Ward 77, I mean, four new schools on this plan. And every time I travel around my area, my ward, I swear there's new neighborhoods that just pop out of nowhere, that weren't there yesterday. And it just goes to show that our capital investments is a good thing, not only for our students, but also for the economy as a whole. So, I always get really, really excited when we talk about capital plans, because I think it involves so many different departments. And then, once it opens, you know, the education, how to plan going into that new school is a lot of work, but it's totally worth it. So, again, it's a win-win situation, and I'm excited that our future students are going to enjoy more Catholic education. And one of the things is—and I think my colleague touched on it—it's—it's no wonder why overcrowding is the number-one parent concern I hear, and especially for high school. I—I can't go a week without a parent worried or wondering, "Where is my child?" Like, "Do you have space?" And of course, yes, 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 yes. We always do. We'll make it work. But this is an excellent plan in order to move forward. And I do want to thank our administration, your diligence, and everything, like my colleague said. It does take a village to educate our amazing students, and this is exactly what we are doing at Edmonton Catholic. So, I appreciate it, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Taber. Next in queue is trustee Harris. Go ahead, please, trustee Harris.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Very much appreciate the work that is done by this team. In our governance meeting, of course, we had the opportunity to see the full reports, the reports both on the 10-year as well as the three-year, and it's the three-year that we approved today. That being said, the level of rigor in the—in the analysis that is done is amazing and really very much appreciated. These are all very much fact-based decisions that—that get taken in terms of the priorities and how those priorities are sorted out. I really, as I say, want to express my deep appreciation to all involved in developing those reports and all of the—all of the work that goes into, you know, preparing the foundation for those reports, that incredible yeoman service that—that yields great benefit for our—for our division and our students. The—you know, as you run the numbers, it—it looks very, very—as trustee Taber has mentioned, we are extremely thankful for the announcements that were made this year, the four additional schools, the four builds, plus also the design for two. You know, when I add that into what we are currently involved in, you know, you mentioned the 3,600 in years three and four, but, you know, if we look over the course of—the next, you know, year one, year '24, '25, '26, '27, I think it's somewhere in the area about 7,200, 7,200 spaces that we're getting. But also, to your point, that's in the same time, because these schools all take a heck of a lot of time to build. They take three years to build. That's in the same time that we're going to be increasing the population by another 10,000 students. So, we're still, you know, just barely—we're not keeping up, right? And if we even include the two—the two that are—that are in the planning phase, that's still, over the course of the next five years, 10,000 spaces, and—and the population is—is growing by 12,500. So, you know, when you look at that, yes, it's great to have those in process. That's extremely important for us. That's unbelievably helpful. And yet, at the same time, we know that we're still going to be experiencing incredible stresses as we go forward and as the city continues to develop. So, this is—I think, a picture of our future, past is prologue. And in this particular case, we're going to be seeing increasing development. We're going to be seeing, as you folks are more than aware, with the rezoning, the—the—I guess, the review of the zoning policies of the city of Edmonton, we're going to be seeing more, yes, growth out, but also densification. So, we're going to be seeing more of these potential needs within our—with our mature communities for replacement schools, those kinds of things. So, we really very much appreciate— So we really very much appreciate all of the incredible work that goes on to develop the foundation for this, developing then into, into the reports, and then developing into a presentation like this for our decision to be taken today. It's, 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 it really is very reassuring for a board, a governance board, to know the level, the quality of the work that's getting done at the ground level to help prepare for, for our decision points today. So thank you so much for that. Did I, one point that I also raised in our, in our governance meeting, and that is, you know, whereas the sizes of our schools have generally been somewhat smaller, okay? We have typically had, our most recent sort of approach has been, I guess modus operandi would be about 930, 950 for our elementary junior high, somewhere in the area of 1350 for our high schools. We're seeing now that those are increasing, and I do understand exactly why that's happening, and that is happening because of the, the population and, and the history of the kinds of approvals that we've been getting. So now, instead of 950, it's about 1,200 plus. Now, instead of 1350, it's going to be 2410, you know? And the question that I raised in governance, and I'll raise it here as well, just so that we get it on the record, is, you know, a question in relation to the culture, you know, one of the things, we have a very special culture in our schools and in our division, and be very interested in making sure that, you know, we, we really have an eye to how we maintain the, you know, that, that quality culture in the schools, even as we are increasing the size of the builds. Can you comment on that a little bit?
Madam Chair, through trustee Harris, I think as a division, we have a distinct advantage on creating that culture. We all know relationships, relationships with students are very important, and our relationship with God is, is important. So as long as we keep that in the, as, as our modus operandi, creating environments and culture with, that's God-centered and focused, I think regardless of the size of school, we'll be fine.
And you mentioned, I think, in governance, this idea of it being, you know, starting at a smaller level and then building out, you know, as, as the, as the, you know, as, as the students start to come in and as the, you know, as the team becomes more acquainted with the, with the, with, can you expound on that a little bit?
Madam Chair, through trustee Harris, yeah, correct. I mean, for those particular projects where we have an opening capacity and a full buildout, you know, we projected the opening capacity for what the needs are in the next three or four years, but we know as the school gets its, gets its footing and sort of developing that positive school culture centered in God, that more students will be attracted. And of course, with, with migration continuing and, and the population growing, I mean, the city's projecting double, double the population by 2050, I believe it is, that we're going to need more room in our schools.
For sure.
Yep.
Thank you again. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, trustee Harrison. Next in queue is Vice Chair Dzichansky. One moment, please. Go ahead, please, Vice Chair Dzichansky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Fiacco, and of course, your whole team. I am so grateful for all you've done. And in fact, Walking Together, I was overjoyed when I first heard it initially because I thought, what a great, a great thing to look everywhere all the time. So it wasn't just one specified area. It was just keeping an eye on the prize every single time. So I, I like that because you can be fleet of foot and you, you see what's, what's coming up ahead of us. And our list is extraordinary, and the government knows it. When it's on our list, it's important. It's not just fluff that we've decided to throw in there and see if something sticks. There's a reason it's there. There's a reason it's in the position it is. And, you know, I've chatted with you on a number of occasions about moving some stuff around there because obviously Ward 76 is my favorite, but I, I love that it's, it's not yours, right? Yours is, is truly the students in the areas that it is needed most and stick to the guns no matter what happens. So I'm grateful for that. And like I say, when we, when we talk about it, I, it's important and the government knows that. And I'm happy. We've had some tough conversations over this last little bit with our families, and I know that they've been involved also with the government and grateful for them and what they've done and spoken to the government and mentioned the challenges that their families have with movement and the fact that we're under, or overcapacity in schools and, and asking families to move schools. And I'm grateful for the way you've done that also, right? The way you've managed that. And, and it lends itself also again to the fact that we need more schools and we're, we're doing it in the order that we need to do it. And, and the advocacy piece is critical. Any opportunity that we have to see that government, we take it. It can be a Christmas party. I don't care. We're talking to them. We see them down the street. Wherever it is, we always take a moment to say, hey, we need more schools, and we're not kidding you. So I, I really appreciate their opportunity, the opportunity to do that and their, their opportunity to listen because they actually do listen to us, which is lovely. And of course, I would be remiss to not quote Oliver Twist and say, in his famous words, please, sir, I want some more.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Dzichansky, and seeing no one else in queue. And seeing as we're on the topic of advocacy, and I'm not going to say anything about Ward 72, despite some of my colleagues, the sentiments of our board are, I mean, obviously quite clear. We're grateful. That's been made clear today that with the commitment of all the projects the Division received in budget 2024. And of course, there's no secret that we look forward to the province continuing to support the rapidly growing number of families choosing Edmonton Catholic schools by building new schools. And our board will continue to advocate for approval and funding for these projects in our commitment to providing an excellent Catholic education in the City of Edmonton. Kudos to all. And regardless of where they have to do it, they do it, as you've heard here today publicly. And I'll turn it back to you, trustee Mutala. Should you wish to close your, to close your motion before we call the vote?
I am good. Everybody has said everything we need to say, and we will be advocating.
Thank you very much. And so calling the vote then? Thank you. And so it'll come as no surprise, as all trustees have voted, and the motion is carried. Thank you. And at this time, we'll turn it back to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, for the second recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so our second recommendation is that based on the evidence provided in Division's capital plan 2025-2028, the board determines that the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy 12, Appendix B, relative to the current evaluation period. Quality indicator 8.1 ensures the three-year planning process involves appropriate stakeholder input and results in high stakeholder satisfaction. Quality indicator 8.3 develops short and long-range plans to meet the needs of the Division and provide for continuous improvement. And quality indicator 9.1 ensures Division compliance with all Alberta education and board member mandates.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson. And trustee Mutala, I do see you in queue. I'm assuming you're going to make the second part of this motion. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. I move that based on the evidence provided in the Division's capital plan 2025 to 2028, the board determines that the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy 12, Appendix B, relative to the current evaluation period as previously read.
Thank you very much, trustee Mutala. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, I am good.
Thank you. And I will open it up to the board. Should there be any comments and/or questions at this time? And seeing none then, we will now call the vote once again. And there you have it. All trustees have voted and all are in favor. Therefore, we'll note for the record that this motion is also carried. Thank you so much. And last on the agenda under business of the meeting is 2.3, Systems Excellence Report. And we'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you very much. And so we have Edmonton Catholic Schools. We conducted ECSD Systems Excellence Survey from January 8th to January 25th, 2024, to engage Division staff from all schools and all departments with respect to their work and work environment. And this is a new survey that we introduced this year. And hope with that, reflecting our new Division Plan for Continuous Growth. To share more about the Systems Excellence Survey, our Superintendent Fian, Executive Director McCauley and Director Schlosser. Over to you.
Good af, pardon me, good afternoon, trustees and Chief Superintendent Anderson. As you know, the beginning of a new assurance cycle involves a shift in practice on many fronts. When the board established the new priorities for the three-year planning cycle that we just began, we also created a new Division Plan for Continuous Growth. This also meant that we needed to revisit our instruments for measuring our progress in those priorities. The decision was made to focus our ECSD annual survey on student growth and achievement and the teaching and learning experience, and to have only our teaching staff provide their voice in that survey. It is worth noting that in previous years, when all staff participated in the ECSD annual survey, they may or may not have been able to respond to various questions depending on their role. With this change in the annual survey, we thus needed to create a new survey instrument, a Systems Excellence Survey, that all staff would be able to respond to so that we have a clearer picture of ourselves as an organization. Director Schlosser, in collaboration with the Office of the Chief Superintendent, has led the development of the ECSD Systems Excellence Survey. This new addition to our Division's toolkit that supports our commitment to data-informed continuous improvement was designed to ensure that we have a series of questions that are representative of all of our, of our Division priorities and that are inclusive of all of our staff. We've captured the overall staff opinions within our priorities in the Systems Excellence Survey. What this shift has allowed us to do is to have one instrument that is focused on the student experience and another that is focused on the staff experience. As Director Schlosser always shares, we have separated our fruit salad by putting our apples and oranges in separate baskets. These survey results provide us with a much clearer picture of our strengths and areas for growth as an organization with respect to our Division priorities. We are extremely pleased to now have a series of themes that are more direct measures of our staff's experience of our Catholic identity, staff wellness, workplace culture, and staff engagement, to name a few. School principals and department leaders will now be able to meet the needs of their staff more intentionally with the information gathered from this survey. I'm pleased to turn it over to Director Schlosser to share our Division results.
Thanks, Susan. Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to present the ECSD Systems Excellence results for the 2023-2024 school year. Edmonton Catholic Schools conducted the new ECSD Systems Excellence Survey from January 8th to January 25th, 2024, to engage Division staff with respect to their work and their work environment. The survey items were developed during the 23-24 school year to reflect the new Division Plan for Continuous Growth. As survey items were newly developed, and it was the first year of implementation for the survey, the results for the 23-24 school year are not comparable to previous surveys conducted in prior school years. Division staff from all schools and all departments were invited to participate in the survey. Each survey consisted of a series of statements to which survey participants were asked to indicate their level of agreement. Overall, response rates were representative. In addition to the Division report, principals receive school reports and superintendents receive department reports in a simplified format so they can easily review these results with their staff. As indicated in the report, the original scale used on the survey of strongly agree, agree, disagree, and strongly disagree was simplified into an agreement and disagreement scale, which is consistent with our survey methodology from prior years. As these dichotomized results made the results more comparable to Alberta education's methodology. The survey items were also grouped into themes that reflect the Division Plan for Continuous Growth priorities. Consistent with past survey methodologies, the results from the survey were combined into themes. Overall, we see high rates of agreement or satisfaction on the themes. All of the themes are over 88%, which is very impressive. We also ranked the themes to determine the top performing themes. We're happy with the results of all 10. In ranking the themes, we're pleased to see an extremely high rate of agreement of 97.6% for Division staff when it comes to Catholic identity. And looking at the overall satisfaction with Edmonton Catholic Schools theme, we see that 93.7% were in agreement. And looking at the results further, Division staff were 93.2% in agreement with the foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis and Inuit theme, 93.1% in agreement with the workplace culture theme, 92.7% in agreement with the promoting diversity theme, 92.2% in agreement with the staff engagement theme, 91.8% in agreement with the information and resources theme, 91.7% in agreement with the wellness theme, 91.1% in agreement with the facilities theme, and 88.7% in agreement with the professional learning and improvement theme. Overall, the theme results are very positive. We are especially pleased that the Catholic identity and overall satisfaction with Edmonton Catholic Schools themes were the top performing survey themes. We will now review the thematic survey results in more detail. Catholic identity is a critical component of Catholic education. The items that make up this theme include having opportunities to participate in religious celebrations, having opportunities to pray regularly, and creating and promoting a working environment that is grounded in the Catholic faith. Catholic identity is definitely an area to celebrate. The theme results are over 97%. You'll also note that the theme associated wellness is over 91%. The items that make up this theme include having someone at work to talk to as support is needed, promoting a psychologically safe working environment, knowing where to find Division tools and resources to help manage wellness, as well as valuing these wellness tools and resources. Workplace culture is an important aspect of work-life. The items that include this theme include showing respect for people of all face, cultures, backgrounds and experiences, promoting an environment that is reflective of the respect in the workplace and min procedure, feeling that they can go to their principal or supervisor if they need support, feeling that Catholic, that conflict management is handled using a respectful approach, and feeling that their contributions are acknowledged and appreciated by their principal or supervisor. Workplace culture is an area to celebrate. Our results are over 93%. You'll also note that the theme associated with promoting diversity is over 92%. The items that make up this theme include implementing the strategies and actions as outlined in the Equity, Diversity, Inclusion and Anti-Racism Strategic Plan, as well as recognizing and celebrating the unique gifts and talents of Division staff. The foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis and Inuit theme reflects our call to action. The items that make up this theme include the Division working to advance the truth and reconciliation calls to action in schools and departments, and providing opportunities to build foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis and Inuit culture, history, perspectives and experiences. The foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis and Inuit theme is an area to celebrate. The results are over 93%. You'll also note that the theme associated with staff engagement is over 92%. The items that make up this theme include contributing as a team member in the school or department, working as a team in the school or department, having opportunities to participate in social justice activities, having opportunities to voice opinions and concerns at their school or department, as well as having opportunities for a voice into decisions that affect their job at their school or department. The information and resources theme is over 91%. The items that make up this theme include having an awareness of the Division's occupational health and safety procedures, being provided with the information needed to do their job, reading the communications from the Division, having an awareness of the Division Plan for Continuous Growth, and being provided with what is needed to do their job, given the limits on Division resources. You'll also note that the theme associated with professional learning and improvement is over 88%. The items that make up this theme include the school or department expecting staff to participate in professional learning, feeling that their school or department focuses on continuous improvement through evidence-based decision-making, feeling that their principal or supervisor provides feedback to help them improve their work, feeling that school or department-provided professional learning opportunities are useful, and feeling that the Division-provided professional learning opportunities are useful. Facilities are an important, important aspect of our work environments, and the results are over 91%. The item that makes up this theme reflects feeling that their school or site building is a safe and well-maintained facility. Overall satisfaction with Edmonton Catholic Schools is a critical component of Catholic education. The items that make up this theme include feeling that the school or department is a good place to work and feeling that the Division is a good place to work. Overall satisfaction with Edmonton Catholic Schools is definitely an area to celebrate. is definitely an area to celebrate. The theme results are over 93%. Overall, these great survey results are due to the hard work of our division staff and our upper leadership. And thank you. We are now ready for the recommendation.
I'm going to interject, if that's possible, Director Schlosser. Thank you. As you have all seen and heard through the presentation, we've shifted our practices at the start of a new assurance cycle. Alongside establishing new priorities for the three-year planning cycle and creating the division plan for continuous growth, we focused on the ECSD annual survey on student growth, achievement, and the teaching and learning experience with teachers, school administrators, students, and parents and guardians participating in the survey. We were responsive to the request of principals to return to a paper survey to facilitate more effective distribution and administration of the survey to students in particular. We saw decreased participation when we were forced to use digital surveys during the pandemic. We were very pleased with the increased response rates we saw overall, especially the grades 10 through 12 students and parents, as it gives us more robust data when we have a higher response rate. I also want to take a moment to identify the tremendous work of the part of both the Office of the Chief Superintendent and Division Monitoring on developing and implementing this new survey. In addition to revisioning the surveys, sorry, re-envisioning the surveys, there is a great deal more time and commitment involved in distributing, collecting, organizing, scanning, and verifying 41,607 paper surveys. And their turnaround time was swift, and data analysis was efficient and truly impressive. And now, I would like to turn it back to Chief Superintendent Anderson for the recommendations.
Thank you, Superintendent Fian, Executive Director McCauley, and Director Schlosser. We do have much to, to celebrate and be proud of, and, and if anything, it provides us more direct measures to be more responsive to staff. And so, our recommendation is that based on the evidence provided in the ECSD Systems Excellence Survey Results Report, the Board of Trustees determines that the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy 12, Appendix B, relative to the current evaluation period. Quality indicator 1.1 ensures that all school leaders actively promote education in a Catholic context. 1.3 ensures religious celebrations and social justice are organized by schools and departments. 8.1 ensures the three-year planning process involves appropriate stakeholder input and results in high stakeholder satisfaction. Over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Fian, of course, Executive Director McCauley, and Director of Division Monitoring, Val Schlosser, I could listen to you all day. Anyway, to all of you and your teams, thank you for this impressive report that highlights, of course, what we're very proud of, the ECSD, the new, I'm going to put the word new there, New ECSD Systems Excellence Survey, because this confirms not only that Edmonton Catholic is a positive workplace, I believe that's what you said, and an exceptional place to work, but it confirms the recognition of Edmonton Catholic being named, I'm going to throw it out there again, one of Alberta's top employers for the ninth year in a row, and I'm going to stop right there, because otherwise they're going to say that I say it all. So that being said, I do see Trustee Engel in queue to make this motion. Go ahead, please, Trustee Engel.
I move that based on the evidence provided in the ECSD Systems Excellence Survey Results Report 2023-24, the Board of Trustees determines that the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy 12, Appendix B, relative to the current evaluation period. And I am going to read the QIs, because I, I think it's important that, it, it's so clear that we've met them through the results on the Excellence Survey. Ensures that all school leaders actively promote education in a Catholic context. And that really was the number one, the, the Catholicity of the school. And so that was, that was just excellent. Quality indicator 1.3 ensures religious celebrations and social justice are organized by schools and departments. Again, it's who we are, so, so well done. And quality indicator 8.1 ensures the three-year planning process involves appropriate stakeholder input and results in high, higher stakeholder satisfaction. And I think that this is one of the most important, because people have to feel ownership over goals, like you can't just top-down, like you have to be part of it. And I've seen it lots of times on the board. Every time there's a new board, it's very important to redo the, the strategic plan and redo what our priorities are, because people have to own it to want to get behind it. And so, I think that, that you've done an excellent job of that. I like the new survey. I think that the results really speak for themselves. And I would really like to thank, I know Superintendent Fian mentioned the Office of the Superintendent, when you have Lynette and you have Susan involved, you, I mean, you can't lose. And then, of course, Val, our, what did Becky Klow always call you? I think it was simpler than I'm.
A psychometrician?
Yes, and I, we'd really like to thank our psychometrician, Val Schlosser, for the excellent job she did. And I love listening to you report as well, very enthusiastic about numbers. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Trustee Engel. And I'm assuming that you've spoken to the motion, so I won't ask you if you'd like to speak to the motion. Thank you so much. Thank you, and, thank you. And so at this time, we will open it up to the rest of the board, and I do see Trustee Harris in queue. Go ahead, please, Trustee Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to focus my initial comments here on the System Excellence Report presentation. Just a couple of questions on that and then a comment. First question is, this was the first year that this was done. Is this an annual? Is this, will, will this be done annually along with the, you know, the standard surveys that we do?
Our intention is to continue doing this survey, and it will, this particular survey will remain static for three years, because this is the, the, the priority cycle that we're in.
So when you say static for three years, it'll be done on, for three years, consecutive years, as opposed to once for this three years and then another one? So it'll be done each year?
And, that's correct. And then, and then what we'll do, what we'll do is we'll compare our, our metrics over the years, and we, and we hope to see growth in each of the measurements that, that are reflected in the survey.
Makes a ton of sense. Second question was just in relation to, Dr. Fian referred to the, to the responses to the annual survey. The response rate with respect to, to this survey, can you share with me what, or share with us, was that a similar sort of high level of response to that?
Yep. Madam Chair, to Trustee Harris, we had fantastic results when it comes to response rates. With respect to systems excellence, there was 3,991 responses out of 4,660 distributed surveys. That is a response rate of 85.6%. So that's wonderful.
That's awesome. That's awesome. I guess, Madam Chair, if I could, I just have a comment on this.
Yes, please go ahead.
Two, two public board meetings ago, and you made, you alluded to it, we were talking about Edmonton Catholic, once again, being identified as one of the top 80 employers in Alberta for the ninth consecutive year. And there's a lot of work that goes into that. So thanks for, to everybody for that. The other connection that I'm going to make here is, at the last meeting, we had a great presentation from Human Resources, and one aspect of the presentation that we had from Human Resources related to sort of that total rewards. And we looked at the concept of total rewards, both as in the nature of extrinsic rewards as well as intrinsic rewards, and we commented on the fact that, you know, we don't have a lot of latitude with respect to what we do on the extrinsic rewards, because there's a lot of central bargaining and so on and so forth that goes on certainly for our teachers. But we do have more latitude with respect to the intrinsic rewards. And so, then today's, at today's meeting, we've had two conversations that now relate to that side of the equation. The, the local bargaining that was going on with respect to our ATA is more, you know, deals somewhat with extrinsic, but it also deals in large part with intrinsic, right? Establishing a framework for culture and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of work that's been going on in relation to those intrinsic rewards. I really appreciate the fact that the organization, the, the division is now really taking a, a deep dive into, you know, what, what sort of, what, what are the, what are the components of our, of our culture? What, and how, and how is that seen from, from our staff? So that's a, that's a very important piece. I love the idea that we're getting a, a level of rigor on, on our assessment of, of sort of the composition of our, of our culture and what contributes to it. I love also the fact that you've been able to disaggregate those results from the standard survey, and then disaggregate them further into, into a school-based, so that we can, you know, this can be operated on. You mentioned in the simplified format at a, at a school level. You know, what are we, how are we doing at, at a school level? So for me, when I hear about those kinds of things, it really drives home for me how serious we take the, the culture of the organization and, and having a level of rigor around how we deal with the culture and all of the support systems, the very strategic support systems that, that, that help, you know, reinforce that culture and actually elevate that culture. So I want to express deep appreciation to all for that.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris, for your questions and observations. Thank you. And next in queue is Trustee Mutella. Go ahead, please, Trustee Mutella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to say a big thank you to Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Fian, Val, and Susan. This report, this new system survey report is, it's just a wonderful report in the way that you have allowed all of our staff to respond. Because if you have a voice in something, you're going to take ownership and pride in everything you do. So that's very impressive. I'm also glad you did the paper surveys, because you can see by the results, 85.6% higher response rate. So that is very good as well. And I'm not going to say this is why we made the top 80 employees for nine years in a row, because this is important as well. But you know what? I was, I was just a little concerned. One little concern I had is, last month, we had a big report on how, how much professional development that we offer all of our staffs. And then, it was, it was one of the little bit lower scores. And I think, I know that you guys are probably already on it to figure out how we can bring that score up to 90, right? So I'm sure that you'll be finding some more professional development to offer to all of our staff as well, because you guys do an excellent job anyway. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Mutella. Trustee Taber, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I really appreciate quality indicator 8.1, that it was achieved. And I would like to highlight it. It, I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach from the top employer, but stakeholder input. I've always been told that community engagement and stakeholder input is the number one role of being a trustee. And I'm so proud that all of the stakeholder communicated, stakeholder, community engagement ways that the board and division make sure that we are always on the right track. And we even won an award recently for being, having community engagement from ASBA. And, and that shows that we do community engagement. But this is another way that we can show that we do community engagement. And I love that we have measures in place to look towards the future and how we can get even better. We're never just stopping. And education's always involving, and it's important to pause, to take a second to, to make sure that we are on the right track. So finally, as always, I want to thank you for working all these numbers into a beautiful story that we are able to share with our public. It is a picture that you can paint that, as much as numbers are great, they don't tell a story for me. So I really always appreciate all the effort that you do to make that happen. So, thank you. And yeah, something that we're going to keep track of next year and the following year to see where we go as a division. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Trustee Taber. And seeing no one else in queue, once again, we'll echo the sentiments of our board and share that these results truly do make us ECSD proud, and it gives us the opportunity to capitalize. And I believe, Trustee Taber, you picked up on this, on our strengths, but also, we look for those areas of, of improvement to ensure that we continue to foster the excellence that we're so proud of. And I'll turn it back to you, Trustee Engel, should you wish to close your motion at this time.
I think that we've all covered every area, so thank you.
Thank you so much. And so we'll now call the vote. Thank you. All trustees have voted in or in favors. We'll note for the record that the motion is carried. Thank you. And next on the agenda is number three, Presentation and Review of Accountability Report 3.1, ECSD Annual Survey 2023-2024. And over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, we were busy handling many paper surveys over the course of December, January. And we are pleased to present our ECSD Annual Survey Results Report for 2324. Once again, I invite Superintendent Fian, Executive Director McCauley, and Director Schlosser to share some of this, these exciting results.
Trustees and Chief Superintendent Anderson, as was shared earlier, the beginning of this three-year planning and assurance cycle necessitated the development of new local metrics to gauge our progress in our new priorities. Perhaps the most significant change this year and moving forward was the decision to focus the ECSD Annual Survey on student growth and achievement and the teaching and learning experience. For this reason, when we look at the staff who participated in the survey, teachers and school administrators, those who directly oversee teaching and learning, were the only staff members who responded to this survey, along with students and parents and guardians. Director Schlosser, in collaboration with the Office of the Chief Superintendent, has led the redesign of our division's assurance instrument, the ECSD Annual Survey, in order to ensure that we have consistency in our questions and that they are representative of both our division priorities and the Alberta Education Assurance domains. This new set of questions will remain the same over the course of the three-year planning cycle, so that we can compare our progress in each measure from year to year to support our continuous improvement. Where we are now is important, but where we will be in three years from now, at the end of this insurance cycle, is even more important. Schools will now be able to use these local measures to monitor and adjust their school's three-year plans as necessary. I'm pleased to turn it over to Director Schlosser to share our division results.
Thanks, Susan. It's my pleasure to present the ECSD Annual Survey Results for the 2324 school year. Edmonton Catholic Schools conducted the ECSD Annual Survey from December 4th, 2023, to January 12th, 2024, to engage students, parents, guardians, and certificated teachers with respect to the quality of Catholic education provided. The survey items were developed during the 2324 school year to reflect the Alberta Education Assurance Framework, as well as the new division plan for continuous growth for the 2023 to 2026 school years. As the survey methodology was changed and the survey items were newly developed, the results for the 2324 school year are not comparable to previous surveys conducted in prior school years. All students in grades four to 12 were invited to participate in the surveys. Parents, guardians of all students, and that's from 100 voices through all the way up into fourth and fifth-year high school students, were also invited to participate in the survey, as were certificated teachers at all schools in the division. Each survey consisted of a series of statements to which survey participants were asked to indicate their level of agreement. Overall, response rates were representative. In addition to the division report, schools receive school reports in a simplified format so that they can easily review the results and can determine how to improve results in their school plan for continuous growth. Division results will be available on the division assurance dashboards, and individual school results will be available on the school assurance dashboards. As indicated in the report, the original scale used on the survey of strongly agree, agree, disagree, and strongly disagree was simplified into an agreement and disagreement scale, which is consistent with our survey methodology from prior years. These dichotomized results made the results more comparable to Alberta Education's methodology, as well as made the results easier to compare across the five survey groups. The survey items were also grouped into themes that reflect the new division plan for continuous growth priorities, as well as the Alberta Education Assurance Framework domains. Consistent with past methodologies, the results from students in grades four to six, grades seven to nine, and grades 10 to 12 were combined into one grades four to 12 student group. As a result, on this chart, there's results for the student group, the parent guardian group, as well as the certificated teacher group. Overall, we see high rates of agreement or satisfaction on the themes. All of the themes are over 81%. We also ranked the themes to determine- to determine the top performing themes. We're happy with the results of all thirty-three, but here are eighteen of the top themes that stood out. In ranking the top themes, we're pleased to see an extremely high rate of agreement of ninety-eight percent for certificated teachers when it comes to Catholic identity. Certificated teachers were also ninety-seven point one percent in agreement with the teaching and learning practices theme. In looking at the parent guardian group, ninety-seven percent were in agreement with the foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis, and Inuit theme, and ninety-six point six percent were in agreement with the Catholic identity theme. Certificated teachers were ninety-six point six percent in agreement with the foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis, and Inuit theme, and were ninety-six point five percent in agreement with the parent and guardian engagement theme. Parents, guardians were ninety-six point three percent in agreement with the parent and guardian engagement theme, and were ninety-six point three percent in agreement with the facilities theme. Certificated teachers were ninety-five point eight percent in agreement with the overall satisfaction with Edmonton Catholic Schools theme. Parents, guardians were ninety-five point five percent in agreement with the student growth theme, and were ninety-five point two percent in agreement with the wellness theme. For certificated teachers, ninety-five point two percent were also in agreement with the wellness theme. Parents, guardians were ninety-five point two percent in agreement with the overall satisfaction with Edmonton Catholic Schools theme. Certified teachers were ninety-four point eight percent in agreement with the student engagement theme. Parents, guardians were ninety-four point one percent in agreement with the inclusive and caring learning environment theme, and ninety-four percent of certificated teachers were also in agreement with the inclusive and caring learning environment theme. Parents, guardians were ninety-three point six percent in agreement with the teaching and learning practices theme. And finally, students were ninety-three point five percent in agreement with the foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis, and Inuit theme. In fact, you'll notice that the foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis, and Inuit theme was a top performer across all three survey groups. We'll now review the thematic survey results in more detail. Catholic identity is a critical component of Catholic education. The items that make up this theme include having religious celebrations throughout the school year, learning about the Catholic faith, praying regularly at school, and teachers infusing Catholic values in many subject areas. Catholic identity is definitely an area to celebrate. The theme results are over ninety-two percent across all three groups. You'll also note that the theme associated wellness is over eighty-six percent across all three groups. The items that make up this theme include having opportunities to learn about physical wellness, mental wellness, and spiritual wellness. An inclusive and caring learning environment is an important aspect of school life. The items that make up this theme reflect welcoming and including others, showing respect for people of all different face, cultures, backgrounds, and experiences, demonstrating care for others at school, and celebrating diversity by having events and activities that highlight different cultures and backgrounds. The inclusive and caring learning environment is, is definitely an area to celebrate. Our results are over ninety percent across all three groups. The foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis, and Inuit theme reflects our call to action. The items that make up this theme include working to advance the truth and reconciliation calls to action in the schools and community, as well as teaching and learning about First Nations, Métis, and Inuit culture, history, perspectives, and experiences. The foundational knowledge about First Nations, Métis, and Inuit theme is an area to celebrate. Our results are over ninety-three percent across all three groups. The access to help, support, and resources theme is over eighty-six percent across all three groups. Some of the items that make up this theme reflect having a variety of extracurricular activities, clubs, and or teams, having staff members available if extra help is needed with learning, and providing supports and specialized services. In addition, with, with respect to students in grades nine through twelve, the items that make up this theme also include providing resources or access to help in making career decisions, in selecting courses for life for after grade twelve, and annoying what students need to do to receive a high school diploma or certificate. The theme associated with student engagement is over eighty-one percent across all three groups. The items that make up this theme include participating in social justice activities at school, making choices about how to demonstrate learning, having opportunities to share student opinions about the school with school staff, as well as staff respecting and valuing student, student opinions. You'll also note that the theme associated with student growth is over eighty-nine percent across all three groups. The items that make up this theme include students growing and achieving in literacy and numeracy. The theme associated with teaching and learning practices is over eighty-five percent across all three groups. The items that make up this theme include teachers encouraging students to try their best, students receiving examples of what is expected of them in their class assignments, teachers using a variety of approaches to meet learning needs, having engaging and relevant learning activities, receiving clear and specific feedback about learning, and being taught how to use feedback to improve learning. Parent and guardian engagement is an important aspect of education, and results are over eighty-eight percent across all three groups. The items that make up this theme reflect parents and guardians asking students about their learning, and parents and guardians having the opportunity for a voice in their child's education. You'll also note that the theme associated with facilities is over eighty-seven percent across all three groups. The item that makes up this theme reflects feeling that the school building is a safe and well-maintained facility. Overall satisfaction with Edmonton Catholic Schools is a critical component of Catholic education. The item that makes up this theme reflects feeling satisfied with the quality of education received at school. Overall satisfaction with Edmonton Catholic Schools is definitely an area to celebrate. The theme results are over eighty-seven percent across all three groups. Overall, these great survey results are due to the hard work of our students, parents, guardians, certificated teachers, and upper leadership. Thank you. Over to you, Superintendent Fien.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Schlosser. Whereas the previous excellence survey focused on themes our school leaders could use to better meet the needs of staff with a verified response rate of three thousand nine hundred ninety-one, this annual survey focused on student growth and achievement with the teaching and learning experience with teachers, school administrators, students, and parents and guardians, all participating in the survey, with, again, the distribution, collecting, organizing, scanning, and verified response rate of forty-one thousand six hundred and seven paper surveys. We are very pleased with this increased response rate, especially with our grade ten to twelve students. As with greater response rates, we have a higher quality of data in which we can use in order to inform our future direction. And now I would like to turn it back to Chief Superintendent Anderson for the recommendations.
Thank you, Superintendent Fien. As you mentioned, more, more data to directly inform how we will be responsive to teaching and learning is important. And as you can see listed, we have several quality indicators. And so our recommendation is that based on the evidence provided in the ECSD Annual Survey Results Report twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, the Board of Trustees determines that the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy Twelve, Appendix B, relative to the current evaluation period. Quality indicator one point one ensures that all school leaders actively promote education in a Catholic context. One point three ensures religious celebrations and social justice are organized by schools and departments. Two point one conducts an analysis of student success and ensures school principals develop action plans to address concerns. Two point three ensures parents and students are satisfied with levels of achievement. Three point one develops measurements and monitors progress relative to providing a welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environment. Eight point one ensures the three-year planning process involves appropriate stakeholder input and results in high stakeholder satisfaction. And ten point five promotes positive public engagement in the division. Over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Fien, Executive Director McCauley, and of course, our Director of Division Monitoring, Val Schlosser. For another, thank you, and your team, of course, for another impressive report that confirms an outstanding level of overall satisfaction from our students, our families, our teachers. And again, and again, it highlights the trust and the confidence that our stakeholders have in our division, and of course, our commitment to deliver an exceptional Catholic education. And as this recommendation requires a motion, and I do see Trustee Taber in queue, I'll turn it to you, Trustee Taber, to please make this motion on our behalf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that based on the evidence provided by the ECSD Annual Survey Results Report twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, the Board of Trustees determines that the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy Twelve, Appendix B, relative to the current evaluation period, as previously said, right?
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do. So first of all, thank you to everyone that's involved. I know it's a lot of work. And as we just previously talked about, the numbers tell a story. But I kind of want to focus on the student input. I always have a funny story. When I go into the schools, when I get invited to talk to students, they always ask me, what do you do? What is the trustee responsible for? So I always say our number one is community engagement. And I let the students know that their input as our stakeholder to the board is extremely important. And they always look at me and they're like, what do you mean? I, I've never told you anything. I don't talk to you. And I'm like, well, have you ever filled out a survey? And they're like, yeah, yeah, we have. And I say, well, that is actually how we hear your voice in Catholic education. So I always say, please make sure you fill out your surveys. Please let us know what you think. And also encourage your parents and guardians to also fill it out because, as you can see by this report, we are listening. And it is something that we do value. So always fill out those surveys. I always tell that. Parents, when I talk to students, talk to teachers, because we want to hear your voice. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well done. Thank you so much, Trustee Taber. Next in queue is Trustee Engle. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, survey says we're doing pretty good. I just have a couple of questions. I'm interested to, like, I love that you break it into the agree and disagree. Otherwise, it would be impossible to, to put a handle on how you measure. But do people comment when they strongly disagree? Is there a place for comments at all? And if there isn't, is there any value in it? I, I'm just sort of, I mean, our results are so good that it's probably not really an issue. But I'm the type of person, if ninety-nine percent of the people say, gee, that was well done, and one percent of the people say that was a total waste of time, I, that's all I think about is the one percent. So maybe there's a reason or something. I'm just wondering, A, is there a place to comment? And B, is it a good idea to have that? Is it valuable or?
Madam Chair, to Trustee Engle, on the particular survey, we don't have an area for comment. However, sometimes we do receive some written comments. And what we do is we collect those and we bring them to Chief Superintendent's office. Our SOS group also looks through them as well. And then different surveys have different sort of aspects associated with them. Certainly, when we're doing something large like this, that means we had forty-five thousand five hundred ninety-eight responses out of eighty-eight thousand and six surveys distributed. You know, we're trying to get a high volume of really important information, but there's other types of surveys in our division where we do collect comments and we do a qualitative analysis associated with that.
Yeah, I just remember working in human resources, and we would, we would always hand out a feedback sheet, a survey or whatever. And the last question was, would you like to see the Human Resources Department offer more courses? Everybody would check yes. And then it says, if yes, please describe what you would like. And then they went back and scribbled out yes and checked no. So I realized that comments are kind of hard to, to go by. But thank you for that answer. And the other thing I would like to do is I, I really, one thing I picked out of here, and I've noticed over the years it's grown stronger and stronger, I really want to thank Superintendent Nakarado. Because when you look at the foundational knowledge of the First Nation, Métis, and Inuit students, and in all three groups, students, parents, and teachers, I really credit a lot of that to you, Joe, and the work that you've done and that you've built on each year that you continue doing it. So thank you very much because that's so important. And to the rest of you, our psychometician and Superintendent Fien, of course, Susan McCauley, who just has a magic touch with numbers and what we need and how we put it together. Thank you so much. And of course, the leader of the crew who gives the direction and sets the sail, Chief Superintendent Anderson. So thank you all very much.
Well done. Thank you so much, Trustee Engle. Next in queue is Trustee Harris. Go ahead, please.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. Congratulations are in order. The results are, are very, very good. And yet I know that this team is, is a team that always wants to elevate. So, you know, it's kind of always better, better, better. So as, as strong, and I guess somewhat where Trustee Engle is, almost constructive discontent, you know, as strong as those results are. And you folks are to be applauded for the quality of those results. And thank you so much for, for, for creating a mechanism for our community, our students, our parents, our teachers, our staff, to have input into that, into that, into that, into that process. That is extremely important. We're a fact-based, we, we, a fact-informed sort of decision-making model. And this very much supports that. Thanks so much for, for all the work that you do on that. I also, picking up on what Trustee Engle mentioned about FNMI, I just want to, you know, again, thank Superintendent Nakarado, and of course, the Council of Elders for all the work that they do. And, you know, I was just at a sacred pipe ceremony with a number of my fellow trustees, just, I think it was last week, you know, at one of our schools. We have about five of those that go on. So this is something that I can, I can share. Not only, you know, do our parents, students, and staff sort of really want to understand this better and get this better, but I can assure you that the trustees are, are all on board with that. Absolutely, yes. And, and very appreciative of the work that, that goes on there. Did have a couple of questions, if I may. One, I, I noted when, when the report was presented at our governance meeting, there was a reference, we, we talked a little bit about response rates. And Superintendent Fien, you mentioned the, the elevation of the response rates in this, in this survey, that they have actually gone up a little bit from the previous ones. That's what it looked like to me, too. And I, I wonder if you could put a, a kind of some granularity to that in terms of, you know, what it used to be and what it is on this one, and what the potential impact of that change is.
Madam Chair, to Trustee Harris, yes, we did have a substantial improvement in, when it comes to response rates. Last year, of course, you'll recall that we did a digital survey. This year, we did a paper survey. And so with respect to the grades four to six students, we went from eighty-four point three percent to ninety-one point two percent. Grades seven to nine, we went from seventy-seven point five percent to ninety point two percent. Grades ten to twelve, we went from forty-six point six percent to seventy-four point one percent. Parents and guardians, thirteen point nine percent to twenty-three point six percent. And certified teachers, a little bit different because it's a new group, but last year we did division staff at seventy-nine point three percent. This year with certificated teachers, ninety point one percent. So those are very improved, very high response rates. And it does definitely confirm the validity of our results on our survey.
Totally. You know, those kinds of response rates speak to a high level of validity, for sure. Thank you so much for that. Second point being, a second question being, and I think you'll respond in the affirmative to this, but as with the earlier excellence report, my understanding is that these are also sliced and diced such that they are potentially available to schools based on, on their own experience. And the schools can pick up and, and have some conversations around how to, how to fortify or how to elevate. Would that be accurate?
Madam Chair, to Trustee Harris, that's absolutely accurate. We provide school-level reports out. And certainly, the expectation is that the schools will meet with their staff, be able to talk to their parent council, and, and really share the results. In addition to that, we have that in our assurance dashboard. So we're completely transparent with our results. And they're there for, of course, our communities, the media, whoever is interested in the results.
Thank you very much. And I know that as, and I know the answer to that. And I know that as, and I know the answer to that because, you know, being at some of the school council meetings, parent advisory council meetings, these results do get discussed, as do the plans for continuous improvement. So, you know, when I see the, and not only at a divisional level, the plans for continuous, but also at the school level, right? So when I see the response around parent engagement and parent involvement in the process and information, you know, that resonates very deeply for me because I see the very purposeful, intentional kind of activity and resources that are put to that. So thank you so much for all that work.
Thank you very much trustee Harris. And seeing no one else in queue, we'll turn it back to you trustee Taber, should you wish to close your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do. First of all, I want to thank everybody for taking your valuable time to share your voice in Catholic education.
Trustee Taber, give me one moment. I'm sorry you're, go ahead. My apologies. Go ahead.
It was so brilliant what I just said.
You did, I know.
Take two. So first of all, I want to thank everyone for taking your valuable time to share your voice in Catholic education. I do really want to thank Chief Superintendent Anderson and everyone who was involved in taking the stakeholder input very seriously. I can tell that there was a high level of commitment in order to put these reports together. And I think it is so important that the board monitor that we are moving in the right direction, but also be aware that if we are drifting. I'm very happy to support this motion that shares our story because I think it's a beautiful story. And now, we can go and have more community engagement. And we get to now go and share all these results, not only with our public, but with the government. And this is another valuable way that we can advocate for more schools because of the high achievements that Edmonton Catholic is providing our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Great closure trustee Taber. And at this time, we will proceed to call the vote. And no surprise, all trustees have voted and they are all in favor, and therefore, we will note for the record that the motion is carried. Thank you so much again for your dedication to providing an exemplary faith-based learning opportunity for our students. And this now takes us to 4.1, Board Chair Report. And I'll take the opportunity to highlight just a few areas, one that we've been talking about quite extensively, beginning with the fact that as part of Budget 2024, here we go again, we are pleased that Edmonton Catholic Schools received four construction funding on four projects and design funding for two projects. Design funding, Superintendent Fiaco has already shared with us, will allow our division to prepare for construction. While more schools are needed as as part of our advocacy plan, this is a positive step forward considering the unprecedented growth that we are experiencing with nearly 40% of our buildings at or over capacity. We're pleased to see the province's commitment to building new schools coming to fruition to serve the needs of our communities. And we're grateful, which has been mentioned time and time again here this afternoon, to our senior administration, all our departments, and our Board of Trustees, of course, for working tirelessly to advocate for urgently needed additional new schools. Kudos to all, and thank you Chief Superintendent Anderson for making this happen. On another positive note, on March 6th, the Board of Trustees hosted a division-wide community of school councils event, which I'm sure that trustee Taber is doing the dance of joy over there for our parents and guardians. The evening's 11 sessions aimed to create an open dialogue and deepen the connection between the school and home. Once again, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we wish to express our appreciation to all our parents and guardians who attended the event, and of course, to our division administration who facilitated the session, and to the organizers of this inspiring evening of learning. And finally, as Holy Week falls during spring break, we wish all of our students, families, and staff a very safe and glorious Easter with a wonderful opportunity to rejuvenate and relax. And with that, I'll read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Board Chair Report on hashtag #ECSDFaithInspires February 23 to March 14, 2024 for information purposes. And we'll now move on to 4.2, Chief Superintendent Report, and over to you Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, spring break is around the corner, and we managed to squeeze quite a few activities in a short amount of time this month. And I would just like to highlight a few in relation to our division priorities. In Living Our Faith, I just want to take an opportunity to thank Father Julian, who shared a series of videos on various aspects of Lent for our community to learn each week. And so, if you saw on Instagram, they were short snippets that really helped to educate and engage our students and families. We had an annual St. Francis Xavier Bike-A-Thon, supporting our Edmonton Catholic Schools Foundation and Catholic Social Services, and really proud that the students and staff were able to raise over $96,500 in support of two amazing organizations. Under Learning Excellence, we know that we had the K-6 Social Studies Curriculum, the draft released, as well as a scope and sequence for K-12. And the ministry is looking for feedback. And so, our learning services team and others are diving deeply into the curriculum and preparing to provide some of that feedback back to the ministry. We had 24 engaging projects that were shared at the Edmonton Regional Science Fair. So earlier, we had mentioned that at Lubin Christi, we had students come more as a showcase, but we also had some students go into a more competitive venue, and so excited that four of those 24 projects were recognized with awards. In addition to what we were talking about earlier in our surveys, we are sending a message out to our families tomorrow. Just wanted you to be aware of that, that our families will be able to celebrate our success as well as we share some of the survey results. Under Organizational Excellence, we did have our admin placements take place last week, and so we have new school administrators going to leave some communities and join others. And I just want to thank the team who spent a lot of time and energy and lots of thought put into our admin placements. Our education student networking information and event had 98 participants who joined us, and that was hosted by human resources. And this was, it's really a valuable step in providing our pre-service teachers an opportunity to become comfortable with our division, make some connections, build relationships, and hopefully make the decision to join our Edmonton Catholic Schools. And finally, under Embracing Diversity, we had Cabana Suck at Ecol Prer Antoine, and there we celebrated the Francophone culture, and the weather was perfect, the food was great, the dancing and storytelling were all welcome activities for our families and students. And finally, St. Thomas More School hosted their sacred pipe ceremony last week. And as you mentioned trustee Harris, the importance of being able to acknowledge and celebrate together. And so, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Chief Superintendent's Report on hashtag #ECSDFaithInspires March 2024 for information purposes.
Thank you very much Chief Superintendent Anderson for your report, which once again highlights the many activities as they relate to the division priorities. And some of those activities, we joyously as a board participated in, and they were excellent. So thank you for including us as well. And thank you to you for your inspiration, of course, to lead and to ensure excellence, and you do it with such integrity and professionalism. Thank you so much. And as this is not a motion, I take pride to read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Chief Superintendent's Report on hashtag #ECSDFaithInspires March 2024 for information purposes. And this now takes us to 5.1, and I'll turn it to trustee Taber for our closing prayer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Dear God, we remember that on the last day of creation, you rested and told us to do the same. Give us rest from our routine during this upcoming spring break and fill us with joy. Keep us safe and be with us as we spend time together and enjoy quiet time alone. We thank you, Holy One, for days of work and learning and days of play and rest. We pray especially for those who are vulnerable to sickness at this time. We ask you to protect them and give us special measures of your grace to be mindful of how our actions might impact them. Remind us to be faithful, to provide safe spaces for all. Help us to love you and love each other. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you so much trustee Taber. And last on the agenda is 5.2. And we are looking for a motion to adjourn and do recognize trustee Mutala in queue, but I just want to say, this was a long agenda. I never thought we were going to get out of here before 5. So I'm just going to keep talking until we can, no, I'm just kidding. Trustee Mutala, go ahead, please. Give me one second. Go ahead, please.
I move that we adjourn this meeting and happy Easter and spring break to everyone.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No.
No, so with that said, we will call the vote. And very quickly, there, everybody's in favor, which means that the motion is carried. Thank you for the record. We'll note that the motion to adjourn is carried. Thank you once again, and trustee Mutala has already beautifully shared, on behalf of us all, we wish you all a wonderful Easter and a safe and relaxing spring break. Thank you and God bless.